You want to sit by your room here?
Just do that.
Okay.
A little my story about your daughter.
It's gonna be so nice.
I would.
It's a little over here, you know.
All three in order? Yeah. Please, Ben, put it in.
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Sarah Sardam.
Here.
Gary Randall.
Here.
Kathy Greenway.
Here.
Brandon Kiefer is out tonight, and Jill Sternquist.
Here.
We have a form. We have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. I guarantee a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda before us?
Second.
Moved by Greenway, second by Sarda, that we approve the agenda. Roll call, please.
Greenway?
Yes.
Sarda?
Yes.
Sternquist?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes. And before you have the minutes of the October eleventh, twenty twenty-two regular school board meeting.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion by Sternquist, second by Greenway. Discussion, roll call, please.
Sternquist?
Yes.
Greenaway?
Yes.
Sarda?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes. Conflict of interest, any board member want to declare a conflict of interest at tonight's meeting? Hearing none, moving on to number five on this. Well, it's our consent agenda. I guarantee a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Greenway, second by Sarda to approve the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Greenaway?
Yes.
Sarda?
Yes.
Sternquist?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes. Okay, next up, on the right page. Public comment, do we have anybody who's wished to appear for the board this evening, Jason?
We did not have anybody sign up.
Next up, we have good news student achievement, Mrs. Valdez, Mr. Clemish, and Mrs. Olson.
Good evening, thanks for letting us share good news. Busy evening, we have all six buildings with parent-teacher conferences tonight, so we have a lot of, a lot of teachers meeting with parents tonight. I have Taylor Olson with me, special ed at Yankton High School. This is her first year in Yankton, and she's here to share some good news with transitional services from age eighteen to twenty-one that we do with, with our kids. We also do transition from middle school to high school, even elementary to middle school. But at, but at age sixteen, we offer a transition plan for all of our special ed kids, and, and Taylor's here to share some news about that.
Hi, I'm Taylor Olson. So I have three different things to talk about. The first one is, right now, well, in twenty-seven minutes, we have the adult service agencies meet and greet, and so we're doing that tonight during parent-teacher conferences at the high school from five-thirty to seven-thirty. This event was started several years ago to bring together local and regional agencies that provide services to individuals with disabilities from their time in school and then their transition to adulthood. So this is super informal, and it provides families with an opportunity to explore supports that may be available, available to them all in one location. So this year tonight, we have ten agencies and fourteen representatives joining us for the event, which is the most that we've ever had. So just a couple, we have ABS, Dakota Lane, Department of Labor, Family Support Three-Sixty, Disabilities Coordinators from Mount Marty in USC, and then Vocational Rehab Rehabilitation Service, a bunch more. So after this is done, feel free to stop. There are some refreshments and stuff. Second thing, project skills, so I don't know how many of you have heard of it, but we, it's a paid work experience through bulk rehab, it's funded through bulk rehab, so it's for high school students with disabilities, and it allows our students to gain work experience throughout the Yankton community. So they start meeting with their job coaches at the high school, just them and their job coach, soft skills, and then eventually they find a work environment that's best for them, and they receive hands-on job coaching throughout the whole process, working through the kinks of what goes wrong while they're working, what goes right. And then in the end, some workplaces go on to hire our students to work if their hours are complete. And then the last thing that I wanted to share about was right.
In alley, and let's see, who's the third one? Chrissy Chop from L and M Radiator, Jim Palmer, who's James's boss. They presented with the panel, and to hear you guys, to hear the things that these kids are able to do, can, kids, young men, are able to do at their jobs was just so awesome. And the job that Yankton School District, Ability Building Services, we contract with them to, to do job coaches, and it was just so neat to hear from the employers what these kids can do. The first thing that they mentioned is dependability. Jack Nelson says, a person with disabilities, he hired twenty-six years ago. This guy never misses work. If he misses work, he better go to his house and see what's going on, because he never misses. The other thing that the employers mentioned was friendliness and a positive work attitude. These young men come every day, they never complain about their job, they take them serious. In fact, James had the keys turned over, he opens the bowling alley, and now he's even training new staff, new staff coming in, James is doing the training. So proud. And more importantly, they do the job that's asked, and they don't complain. All the employers said that. In fact, their comment, their closing statement was, you are a business owner in Yankton, you are not hiring with disabilities, it's your loss. They were very clear about it. So, you know, our transition program's growing, going strong, and I'd like to thank all of our YSD staff. From the day these kids turn three years old, come into our schools, takes a caring staff, work with kids with disabilities till they age out at age twenty-one. So it's a complete YSD cooperative effort to get to this. I'm so proud. And to have these kids live, work in our community, that says a lot about our community. Cooperation from the. Questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Clemish.
You.
Mrs. Valdez.
All right, good evening. To continue to share on the good news. Here we go, I am going.
Fifty-fifty shot, I got it wrong.
I'm gonna share about our ELL services. We have two ESL teachers. Kate Hesse is our elementary teacher, you can see her pictured up there. And then Lindsay Peschel is our YMS and YHS ESL teacher. This year, we have approximately a hundred twelve students that these two ladies help support on a day-to-day basis. And then, just in perspective, last year we had about sixty-five. So our ESL, our ELL population has extremely grown this, this school year. And so these ladies are very busy working with our students. This year, we added a couple instructional resource supports to help with language acquisition. Many of our new students are coming in with very limited English skills. So one of our programs that we added is called Lexia English, and you can see some of our students working on that on those iPads. We are using that K-12. It's an adaptive blended learning program designed to help emergent bilingual students to acquire higher language proficiency levels by integrating the speaking, listening, and grammar. That was one of the key points when we were reviewing this software, is that it really has the students speaking as well as doing the listening and working on their grammar skills. And then for our students that are becoming language proficient, we purchased something called Finish Line ELL, and it's just helping the kiddos to improve language across all four domains, reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and to also help them familiarize themselves with our access test, which gauges their proficiency every year. And when we talk about the report card, I'll talk a little bit more about that. But that was a tool that we've been using as well. Tonight, for our good news, I wanted to share with you just some of the different materials we're using to kind of showcase our ELL support that we're offering. Kate wasn't able to make it, but I asked her to share a win, like Jerome. And so I'll share her win, and then Lindsay is here, and she has a few wins that she shared with me. Which one should I share? And I told her to share all of them. So Kate's win is a student at Lincoln. Sorry, so a student at Lincoln from China worked really hard this year to be able to clearly say the overhead morning announcements. So that was her win, the student started with very limited English. I think Mr. Bestie said maybe five words, or count on his hands how many words that this young lady could say, and she read the morning announcements the other day to all the students.
Thank you for having me present on behalf of the ESL program for the Middle One High School. Since I started last spring, we have seen a sixty-one percent increase in our ELL student population. And of that sixty-one percent, over half of them are brand-new to country, and that means that they don't speak any English at all. With that in mind, we were incredibly lucky to be using the resources of Lexia and Frontline to meet the needs of our ELL student population. And I wanted to share some of the success stories that I have here, particularly at the high school. Three students applied to college, and two of them have been accepted. A student got accepted into the National Honor Society, which was a huge feat for her. I have three students graduating from Yankton High School early in December. And I have an ELL student that has had two articles published in the school paper. Been awesome.
Ms. Valdez, a question, or one of you, what do you attribute to growth in the ELL students?
The, our population growth?
Population growth, yeah.
I could say many factors. Many people talk very highly of the Yankton School District. I know Mr. Bestie could speak to that. Just when our, our students are talking to families, maybe from their home country, they're speaking very highly of our school district, asking specifically to come to Yankton and specifically to come to the schools that their family members are a part of. So I think because of our success, our students were seeing a higher population. We also have a lot of refugee families coming to Yankton as well, working in our manufacturing plants and other community things. I think we have a great community, welcoming, our school district does amazing work with our ESL students. So I think the population growth is in a complement of our school district and community.
How many languages are we seeing now? Five. And that, could you give me examples of languages, Spanish and Chinese, obviously?
Spanish, Chinkah, Chinese, Mandarin.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Very necessary program. Google Finance one oh one, Mr. Beetz.
All right. Heather, are you paying attention? All right, tonight's report is gonna be brief, I promise. So this is the time of year that the state releases the aggregated statewide averages, what schools report in our financial package for the teacher compensation. So this was enacted in twenty sixteen with the overhaul of the state funding formula. There were two compliance components. One was on average teacher compensation, and the other was on cash balance reporting. So we'll focus tonight on the teacher compensation. What we've put together is just a quick snapshot for fiscal year, which ended June of twenty-two, and ranking the ESD schools. So make sure that that's legible from the audience. But currently, Yankton ranks number two out of the nine ESD conference-sized schools at seventy-two thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars for total all-in compensation, which includes health insurance and the payroll fixed charges that go into that calculation. So we're quite proud of that placement and how we come out statistically ranking on that. For the twenty-two, year ending twenty-two, all statewide, one hundred and forty-nine schools did meet the accountability requirement, which compares the current year back to twenty seventeen. So that's what's written in statute right now, that's our compliance metric. So for us to be compliant, we have to exceed on average sixty-seven thousand fifty-four dollars. So as you can see, we're quite a ways above state average. Since the beginning, the state average has climbed just over eight percent, which is kind of interesting. So that's good, it's achieving what it was set out to do and raising the statewide compensation average. And in Yankton, we are currently just under seven thousand dollars above the average. So again, we're positioned well, and, which bodes well for our attracting new teachers and retaining the teachers that we've got. So that's the statistical summary for this month. I will just touch on the cash balance reporting as well. That formula that is used for making sure we're compliant is taking the lowest cash position of the school during the preceding fifty-two weeks or twelve months, and comparing it to your percentage of fund balance, and you have to be under twenty-five percent. So we're well within compliance on that as well. I'd show you a graphic, but I can't fit it on one page, because it's massive. So you'll have to take my word for it. But we have the compliance letter on file, and those two provisions continue to be law and through twenty twenty-four at this point. So any questions on compensation accountabilities or cash balance accountabilities? Short and sweet, Dr. Olson.
Thank you. Early Childhood Development Center, Dale Peterson. Aren't we getting these on our screens?
There must be, do we have an internet connection issue? Because our screens are gone. Okay, thank you.
I can see it just fine.
Is it the board happy to be here again? So we have completed our initial core planning group meetings through six meetings. So if you guys recall it, our update that I provided at last month's meeting, we had over twenty-four members that were a member of our core planning group that is focused specifically on designing the early childhood kindergarten center for us, as well as master planning what the future could look like at that site and at that building. So we've wrapped up our meetings. This presentation is going to go through the guiding principles and design criteria that helped create the site and the building diagrams for the building, and then as well as the design concept that we've worked out, and then update of our forthcoming schedule to wrap up the project. So the guiding principles, which is the high arching goals and criteria of the building, are listed here. So the building should be inviting and exciting, yet calm, calming and comfortable. It should be safe and secure. The design should be age-appropriate and accessible for all students. So a lot of that was some of the work of what do we not like about Webster when we talk about our three and four and five-year-olds? So making sure things are scaled appropriately. First impressions is that all students matter. The design should be a pioneer of schools of this type, be unique and innovative. We know that there's not a lot of buildings of early childhood centers in this region or much in the state of South Dakota. So this is really going to be a pioneering building, and it should be treated as such. It should provide a sense of community pride. It should be easy to navigate inside and outside the site as well. The spaces should provide for flexibility and limitless options, and the spaces should be interactive and promote creativity, collaboration, and curiosity. And that's not only for the students, but it's also for the staff that will be working here. Some additional guiding principles include the design should incorporate a sense of belonging and community throughout. The project should consider the community use and where that happens, and that it's intentional. The building and site should be planned for future expansion. The project should be fiscally responsible and meet the needs of our students for the long term. We know that this building's going to be here for many, many years, just like your existing elementary schools have survived many, many. FLAs was a term that the group came up with. It stands for flexible learning areas, and I'll get into what that design means later slides. But those flexible learning areas should be intentional and used by staff and students to the greatest extent possible. Special education services should be located to support inclusivity with their peers. A major goal was to try to push in as much of those services as possible to the students instead of pulling the services out. Specifically, how it operates now, where they actually move to another building for some of those specialized services for that early childhood, or early childhood age. And all educational spaces should provide for supervision and students for their well-being and safety. Next, we worked upon design criteria, and this is a little bit more specific. It talks a little bit more, more about the adjacencies of spaces and the function of those spaces. So preschool should have a dedicated entry that is separate from junior K and kindergarten. However, we could utilize the same parent drop-off. Junior K and kindergarten should have the option to be dropped off directly at the playground or the main entry, because that works well for Webster, that students being dropped off earlier can play on the playground before they are coming into the building. Student toilet access should be within the houses, and that'll be represented on the diagram, that toileting should be nearby the student, where it can be easily observed by the teacher while they're with their, rest of their class, if there is a student that has to leave the classroom, the facilities. All grade-level classrooms should have direct access to natural light. Spaces should allow transparency to encourage the visibility of learning. Educational spaces and equipment should be sized as appropriate for users' ages. Dedicated space for music and gym should be provided. Grade levels and teachers should be grouped and organized together. So that was one of the driving factors, is this is an opportunity to put all of kindergarten together, so it's not only about all kindergarten students, but also all of the kindergarten teachers. And then same thing with the junior K and preschool, that all these teachers could also collaborate and work together. So we had to, the group wanted to optimize that ability and that opportunity with this building. Flexible collaborative environment should be provided for small and large groups. Space for staff collaboration should be provided. Storage needs should be considered and create efficiency by shared storage spaces. A laundry space should be provided with special education. A staff lounge with private restroom should be provided. Any new furniture should be adjustable and/or flexible to serve multiple uses and also align with the spirit of the design. The playground should allow for future expansion, and its equipment should be age-appropriate. Staff parking should be provided. Bus traffic and parent traffic should be separated. We know the chaos that is at Webster, so we wanted that this was designed more intentionally. Bus tra, or gym and cafeteria to be accessible after hours for the community. Media center to be the heart of the building with a variety of access to the different grade levels or the different houses. Self-contained is to be designed for, to be designed for the unique student needs with close adjacency to the grade-level peers. So they should not be around the corner and tucked away from everybody, but they should also have their own environment that is right for them, but be next to their peers that are of that same grade and age level. Preschool is to be on the main level. That was a discussion, whether or not what goes downstairs, what goes upstairs, since this will be a multi-story building. Provide one calm room per house. A motor room should be provided and supported by the PT office and staff. And priority is given to the cafeteria, to playground proximity to best serve breakfast for students and support the recess-to-lunch interaction. So with that, this is a very preliminary site plan, because our site plan still has to be vetted out a little bit with Kirby Hofer and his future development, since this is changing it a little bit from his perspective, as well as some of our engineers. But what's important to understand on this diagram is the adjacencies that the group focused on. So we have our new building here. We have separate parent drop-off from buses. Those are completely separated, even by two different driveways. Our playground has to support not only, what you guys will see later, the cafeteria and gym entrance, but also be available to parents to drop off early by the main entry. We have a preschool entry that is dedicated, and we have a main entry that is dedicated, because preschool has multiple drop-offs and pickups a day because of their programming. And then, as you can see, we are master planning future community partnerships. And if you guys recall, the task first identified that ideally this building would be an early childhood through one. However, because of funding, we are doing an early childhood through kindergarten now, and we are making sure we master plan where that first-grade addition could go. In addition to that, if growth continues, and this continues to attract buildings, or attract students, we do, are making sure we're citing the building so even more additions can be placed on the, onto the building. This to provide the ultimate flexibility for the district and even future boards as they face some decisions in the future. Any questions on the site? I guess some other future considerations would be making sure we're aware of parking expansions. Again, one of the criteria was spanning the playground. And then even if that community partnership, whatever it is, needs their own parking space to making sure that there's some space. And see, it's a pretty filled-up site, even though it seems like there's a lot of acreage to buy. It, it allows you guys to provide that flexibility now, and as well as. All right, so this is our building diagram. I'll enlarge the floors a little bit, so I just wanted to point out, as you can see, it is two stories. The left is our main level, the right is our upper level. Generally speaking, our main level is the entry, or the level you will enter on. Though we have our administration and our secure entry there. And then really, we have that heart of the building being that media center with a maker space, which supports the district's forward twenty twenty-four plan of making sure that we're providing some maker spaces at our elementary schools. We have our specialist of music, and then we have our gym and our cafeteria. And then the green areas are our educational learning houses with flexible learning areas in the middle. But I'm just gonna enlarge it to the main level. So there's a legend there on your right. We have our administration area, like I mentioned. Our preschool entry with our four preschool rooms, our junior K with our four preschools, or I'm sorry, junior K rooms, and then a swing room in the middle that can flex between being a junior K room and a preschool room. So it'll have access to both houses. If I didn't quite make it clear, what a house is, is kind of this wing here. With, so it's the classrooms that surround a flexible learning area. Each house also has student services or special education services that are supported within that house. So you'll see that color red is kind of spread out, splatter painted throughout the plan, which was again intentional to provide that inclusivity of services. We have our gym, cafeteria, right outside of here is where that playground would be. So we have our playground to cafeteria connection that is there. We show a little bit, a line here, that's where we anticipate our after-hours security line, so that if you have second-grade basketball that needs to use this on Saturday mornings, they're able to enter the facility, use the gymnasium, and not have access to the rest of the facility. I, the, any other detail? I don't know how detailed to get. So do you guys have any other questions on the main level, or should I go upstairs and then ask you guys?
How does it work with the preschool entry as far as the safe entry that you have in the main entry? As far as like the safety? Right, like you just said that you had a safe entrance in the main entry. Is it gonna be the same thing in the preschool entry essentially?
Yeah, so what would happen at the main entry is kind of a double vestibule, which is what you guys have been striving for with some of your existing facilities, but because of stairs and some other things at the existing facility, it makes it a little bit more difficult. But it's one of those where you walk in the first doors that are unlocked, and your second set of doors is locked, which will then force you to interact with somebody at that main office. And we're gonna start those conversations tomorrow of what is that interaction? Is it going through a door, standing at a desk, signing in, being personally greeted? Or is it a window and more of a transaction that is an interaction at that point? Yep, so the preschool entry would be very similar as that. Since the preschool adjusts, or does their shifts of classrooms at different times, there would be a staff member. Since the preschool um, adjusts or does their shifts of classrooms at different times, there would be a staff member that would also help manage that. And manage that door. But like when class is in session, those doors would be locked. If there's a visitor that wants to come and they want to come to preschool, but class has already been in session, they would probably have to come through the main entry. And I, again, this is probably a detailed question we'll work on tomorrow, but if a parent came five minutes late to drop off their preschool, they would probably come to the main entry to drop off that preschool. Upstairs is where our kindergarten is located. So again, you see a spattering of red, which is the stu- special ed and the student services. We have our five kindergarten rooms and five kindergarten rooms. So that's a total of 10, which is one more section than what you guys currently have for kindergarten. You'll see here in the middle that there's a teacher collaboration in storage area. So again, the group really wanted to emphasize the ability um, for teachers to be able to collaborate as one group. Whereas right now, there's only one teacher at Webster and there's uh, you know, three at Lincoln. So here they can start to really collaborate as a team and work to work together. We are showing the student toilets as part of that house area as well, um, which was one of the um, criteria. And you can start to see, you know, speech, title, ELL, some of those student services are um, they are located within their uh, learning environments. Questions on the plan? Keep going. We have a couple of images just to start to show what these flexible learning areas um, can do. So this is downstairs with the junior K um, is this side? Excuse me, and preschool, which is this side. So you can see the group decided we should have some openness um, with some operable walls, so the ability to close off. But also the ability to flex open and we'll show you a reason for that later. But it helps um, to do some grade level or all-house learning activities. The group also wanted to make sure that we're intentional when this classrooms teamed up next to each other. Um, and how that interconnection works. And that's actually a decision um, the core planning group left to the users, which will start those conversations tomorrow. Upstairs, here is our um, kindergarten wing. So again, you'll see that ability to open up some walls to create some flexibility. Between the flexible learning area and these classrooms. And as well as the different variety of um, connectiveness um, to the neighboring classrooms. And that is also for teacher support, so that a teacher can identify that another teacher needs a support or that there's an act, an activity happening in the classroom. They can better respond to that visually. Some of the discussions that we will be having is about um, the amount of uniqueness of each room and how each room support the different aspects of the stu- students' learning throughout the day. Because the teachers will generally be offered out of their um, teacher collaboration area. They don't necessarily have to have a dedicated classroom to serve it, to service students from. However, they can better, best choose what room to educate the kids in based on what they're learning at that moment. This may not be how the building opens on the first day, but this design really provides that flexibility for that type, for the various and evolving learning. That is always happening in the public education system. So it's really giving the school district the most flexible way of um, building a new, modern elementary school. But allowing it to flex as curriculum changes, teachers change and students change. Here's an example of um, kind of how maybe the students would be learning. So we have different groups of, you know, students in each classroom shown and, you know, maybe this is more of a lecture style. Curriculum, here's some big, large group work. Um, here's some small group work. Maybe this is the morning meeting when they're talking about what's for lunch and what's important today. So just showing how the different rooms can still all function differently. And then as we've shown you before, those flexible walls, um, these little dots are just picture those are kids sitting on their um, behinds and watching a presenter. But it allows that presentation to be able to spill out. And again, the goal was that that flexible learning area could support the entire student house itself. Very preliminary, just so you guys could start to see, I know not everybody's a plan reader, but this could um, allow you to start to see in 3D. So this is that flexible learning area. This is showing um, that operable wall as it's open. So you're getting a peek into a classroom and then you're getting a peek into the neighboring classroom. Some of the ideas is that this flexible learning area can provide some amenities to all classrooms. This is showing where a potential think could be located. These type of questions will be um, starting to, we're going to fill in a lot of blank um, gaps by having our meetings with our users that start tomorrow. Here is like a, a view of potentially what the media center could look like when you walk into the facility. So we still have our books, we know the importance of books, but how there's still a, a large group learning area and collaboration environment. And then you can start to see little peaks um, of access into those flexible learning areas. Next, we're going to go through um, some of the design concept that I think we're going to be using to help us uh, just focus in on some of our. The way we apply uh, materials and the design decisions as we continue our design of the facility. We know that this building is the center where all learners will learn, launch their career. So whether or not you're three, four, or you start in kindergarten, you're going to start in this building, which is really unique and all kindergartners will start here. So this is where the students really begin their growth and experience for learning. And this is where they'll have their first impressions of the education. So through that, um, we've identified that there is a seed and the seed is really the hub of the growth. It's where um, the seed is what's energized to spark creativity and it, and a seed is planted with hands and it's cultivated a lot with hands. It's the center of growth. And a seed can be structured or randomized, meaning it can be planted and rosed or it can be spread through the wind. Then we have um, our stem and our leaves, um, which allow you to reach your best potential and allow you to thrive. It's really is what supports all functions. It's the, where everything is encouraged to grow is because of the stem and the leaves. We have buds of a plant which provide a concentrated focus um, and also where we nurture and develop. Then finally, we have our roots um, that provide that enrichment, nourishment and really making sure that the, everything is grounded into the community. And that is all kind of overlaid um, with our building plan is how that's put, being put together. So what this just does is allow us um, kind of an infinite opportunity, but yet a, a strategic opportunity to make a really cohesive design in terms of our selection of materials. And our application of colors um, and all of that throughout the facility. What comes next? Um, so we just wrapped up our schematic design. That was all of our core group room. So we're kind of um, right here in the middle. And so what's next is our input design development. That's where we're starting to work out those functional details. Again, we're going to go from 2D to 3D. So next time I come back to you guys, we'll have um, a lot of um, 3D images and renderings from the computer. We'll have those material selections finalized um, and incorporation of M and E systems. So over the next two days, we are going to be meeting with um, oh goodness, over thirty-five users, I think. Having conversations about functional details of their room so that their room can be successful. How many outlets do you need? How many marker boards do you need? What do you imagine happening in this room? Oh, it sounds like maybe this could help support it or, or could we rethink about it this way? So we're going to start our, our first round of those meetings um, tomorrow. We have a second meeting, a second round scheduled for about two weeks after this round two. We'll be going through all of those items, um, which is going to be really important. After that is all done and we have um, the materials and everything collected, um, I'll be back here and I'll give you guys a. An update at the end of design development before we go into construction documents, where we put the details to the paper and the con- or so that the contractor knows how to build the building. Any questions?
I'd like to note this as part of this committee that met as well as Frank was, as Dr. Kendall was. And um, it was a remarkable process because it was such a collaborative effort. And enabled the users to help design the process of the building, the educational process. So not just giving the user a box and say, okay, deal with your box, but saying, here's a whole big concept and how do you want it to develop it? And how do you want it to be used and, and how open do you want it and so forth and so on? And commend Val for the process you and Caitlin began with us and I really do appreciate that. And um, also want to mention the fact that these, the teachers aren't designing their classrooms. Teachers are designing classrooms. And so it's going to be a collaborative thing throughout the entire process. And I just want to commend though, everybody who's been involved. There's been thirty of us or so going to the meetings and so forth and every other Wednesday.
Yep.
Between four and six and maybe later sometimes and, and it's been a good thing for us. And uh, uh, I've never been through a process like this before. And so I'm not sure how common it is, but it really has been a eye-opening experience. I want to thank you for that.
You're welcome. Been a pleasure to be a part of it.
The only thing that I was going to add is that um, we're going to be visiting a school in Storm Lake, Iowa. And I think there's about eight or 10 of us that have signed up to do it. And it will be an early childhood development center specific to that grade level, just like what we're building. So we're excited about that. We think that that will bring back some other ideas to fold into what we've already talked about. And so I'm with Mr. Crandall. It's been a great process and we want to thank Val and her team for leading us and all the input that we've had to it. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up, our school report card. Dr. Kendall?
Yeah, so we're going to have um, Nicole's going to come up, talk about some of our report card. We have Mr. Dracheck here and some of the other administrators. Dr. Olson, if you need to jump in quick, you can. I'm not sure of the timeline, but do what you need to. Thank you.
Alright, so I'm going to kick us off. So every year, um, the state takes our, a variety of data and pushes it out to um, a school report card. With COVID, we know that every report card has evolved um, because of the data available. So this year, one of the differences for our report card is that our performance data is one year. Rather than uh, maybe a few years ago, you might recall it's a, a average of three years. But this is just going to one year of data for our student performance to calculate our SPI, which is um, the school performance index. So it's kind of that overall score that we get um, after looking at all these components that'll show you. Because it's only one year of data, one of the components of the um, SPI is growth. And so we obviously can't measure growth through one year of data. We need the three. So the SPI points were not released publicly um, for the school report card again this year. So they're only released on the private um, report card for school districts. So if, oh, sorry. Okay, so this is how a school performance index for each of our buildings is calculated. At the top, um, middle school and elementary has the same measures. We have student achievement and then academic growth. So because we are only collecting one year of student achievement data from our state tests, we, we won't have points in those categories. And then English language proficiency and school quality, school quality is typically measured by attendance rates um, at the elementary and middle school. High school SPI points are distributed a little bit differently, so they have school achievement. And then they are broken into four-year, they have graduation rates, college and career readiness. And then again, the English language profici- proficiency and high school completion. We're just going to break down these a little bit. This is how the scores are calculated, that overall school performance index. But again, it's not released because we don't have any of the growth data. So to start for English language learners, um, this past year, we had sixty-five students. Seventeen of them were new to um, our district and taking access testing. So in January, February, we um, all of our identified ESL students take access testing. Access testing is a measure of language proficiency. And um, the first year our students take that assessment, they're um, then trajectoryed over five years um, to exit. So if I am a ESL student and I take access my first year and I get a score of a three on a six-point scale it is. Then I would be calculated over the next five years to exit and ex- and receive that score of six. And six just means that our students are English language proficient. And so each year, our students um, are measured based on that and then that's where these scores come from. So I try to put in the calculation um, because it's, it's, it's important to understand where the information is coming from. So we have sixty-five students last year that served a full academic year. So they were here for the full year. Seventeen of them were first-time test takers. So that means that these percentages were based only on forty-eight students. And so when you have a, a low or a, a small population of that, the percentages kind of can be skewed because one student makes up a large percentage of a hundred percent. So um, out of that, um, we had students that made adequate progress. We analyzed the students that um, weren't out of that thirty-five English language learners on track. We analyzed those and that's why we implemented some of our new instructional materials. Sometimes just to clarify, I might be an English language learner and last year I scored a three point one. On access testing and maybe this year my goal was to score a three point five, but I scored a three point four. They are considered not growing um, or not on target. And so sometimes it's just point one. And so we're trying to really help our students to, you know, to achieve um, the success like Kate and Lindsay were able to share. So with that, um, we analyzed those results and have made some instructional decisions to continue to help our students to be successful with English. Any questions on the ELL students? There's no overall SPI score from this. Our data just would show that out of all of our forty-eight students, thirty-five percent of them. Were targeted as on track. Right, and then these would be our overall student performance scores. So our state testing is given in grades three through eight and eleven. Science was also given. Science moved platforms this past year and so they didn't, they have not released the um, student performance score yet. But the fifty-eight percent and the forty-seven percent are average of all of those grade levels combined. And then you can see the state comparison there as well. Alright.
That was our average student score.
So this is the percentage of our population, all of those students together. This is the percentage of population that scored proficient, so a level three or four. Alright, and so then this would be where that SPI score is calculated. But of course, you can see some of those missing components, which is why we aren't given a score. And so the principals will kind of unpack.
Besides, I'm sorry, Bill. Besides the um, besides the uh, proficient measure. Are there other levels? I mean, you're proficient, are you uh, emerging or like that?
Sure. So on state testing, um, our students, and this is just for the state test. And tho- those percentages are those, uh, yeah, those percentages are coming from that. Um, on state testing, you can score a level one, two, three or four. So three would be proficient, four would be above or exceeds grade level, two is approaching and one is below grade level.
Thanks, Nicole.
Good evening. Just want to highlight a couple areas, you know, no matter where the numbers fall, of course, we're always going to be striving towards improving um, where those numbers are at. And specific to reading and those ELA scores, you know, we are optimistic that some recent curricular changes will have a positive impact on those scores. Couple um, areas to highlight, Hagerty supplemental curriculum that we started using in classrooms last year from some of those foundational, dynamic awareness skills. Along with our new open court ELA curriculum across the board. And there are benefits in each of. And there are benefits in each of the buildings to that new curriculum. But we're really hoping that some of those foundational skills at the younger ages will be targeted and more successful, which will in turn improve some of those areas. Another area that we've continued to adapt and, and, you know, improve at is our reading interventions. And we are currently directly servicing two hundred and fifteen students daily inside of our reading interventions. And then we're monitoring another thirty or forty. And so there, there's a lot of students that are being impacted, those interventions. And then on top of that, we tried to increase our flexibility because, because there's some ebb and flow. You might have a student that picks up quicker in a certain area intervention wise. And we can have them get up to proficiency, move them back to the general classroom, and then replace them with another student and pull them up. And so that flexibility and the ebb and flow has increased as well and has allowed us to have some turnover once, once students are able to meet those goals. And so both some of those big picture areas and down to the details of helping individual students, we feel we'll hopefully have those numbers move in the right direction. Questions in the area of reading?
I guess we talk about cricketer changes in order to address some of the issues. Mrs. Vannes, again, I might want to call on you this, but this is, this, are we able to take part these tests and see which areas within each test that we're weaker in or stronger in?
So the state testing is quite broad and it's a little bit more challenging to dig down into those specific skills and areas. We can and have identified that foundational skills, basic decoding, and phonemic awareness were areas, along with NWA, we use to target that, were areas of need from our curriculum standpoint for our students. And so with the implementation of Hagerty and with that as a focus for looking at curriculum changes this last year with open court, we have definitely met our goal in those two areas and are making a strong impact on that. We're monitoring those specific areas very carefully through NWA because we can drill down a little bit deeper than we can with state testing. And we've already seen a great increase in our scores for our students.
The question's going to be asked, do any of you or all of you feel that COVID played a part in our test scores this last year?
Of course, with a loss of learning and direct instruction received directly from our classroom teachers, we're still making up some learning loss that we had while our students were out. Really monitoring those students, like I said, with foundational skills. They are met to, according to state standards, they are listed to be met proficient by the end of third grade, moving then more into multi-syllabic and syllable understanding of words. And so we're really monitoring our students closely in those levels because if they missed some of those early decoding skills, our curriculum and our grade level standards, then don't promote their learning of those, which is why we've implemented some of these curriculum changes as well as offered support from our reading interventionists to our students in all grades, even through fifth grade. That way, we can attack those skills and we'll be able to see the results in our state assessment as well.
All right, good evening. So I'm just going to kind of talk a little bit about math since at Stewart, we piloted the Bridges program last year. So we started that and carried it over to the other schools through paraprofessionals working on those intervention strategies that we found were working with our kids at Stewart that also worked with those kids. We have now added those math interventionists. So we're excited to see what our scores do next year with math, adding that intervention piece that we've been missing, that our scores obviously showed increased our math scores here. So we're able to see more kids this year than we were last year. Last year, we just, at Stewart, Michelle Flear only worked three days a week. She saw a lot of kids in a short amount of time. At the other schools, they also worked with a paraprofessional working on those skills. And it showed that it did help up our math scores there. Another thing that I think that has also helped with our ELA and our math is the shift to putting our special ed students, our kids that were on IEPs in the classroom for that core instruction. So they're hearing the same language that they're going to be hearing when they're getting their assessment with the state testing. And then they get their intervention piece for special ed after that piece as well. Any questions you guys have on math for me?
Additionally, at the elementary school for interventions, so we've started partnering last year with the Boys and Girls Club. They had their Twenty First Century Grant, which was a huge grant that they were awarded. So we do have after-school tutoring. We've got that at three of the buildings now, which will expand to Beadle. Those service up to twenty kids after school every day for two hours. So those students are selected and kind of red flagged in collaboration with our teachers. So just that extra intervention hopefully will improve the scores as well. And they're working on iXL, which is a program that we use with the students during the day too. And then we continue to use those as her paras in all of the buildings to just do additional interventions if needed. And you know, one thing I would say, Mr. Crandall, with your question about absences, the last two years, you know, when you really sit and think that, given what the CDC recommended last year and the year before, there were students who were missing fourteen days straight, ten days straight, seven days straight. And that may have happened multiple times throughout the year, depending if they were the positive one or they were exposed. So that certainly came into play because we know that learning doesn't happen at home the way it would sitting in the classroom. So hopefully, our better attendance this year will also lead to better achievement scores. Questions for elementary?
All right, good evening. So kind of the same story here at the middle school. You know, we have the Math Plus and the ELA Plus classes that we already started at the middle school, which is those intervention classes. So I do believe that we've had more, you know, with our reading. Nicole brought in some reading training lately in the last year or two years for our teachers as well as the curriculum. So that's helped out with the ELA part. Right now, you know, we're digging deep with the math, which is near and dear to my heart. So I know a little bit more about that. But you know, kudos to Nicole for, you know, having a curriculum director is a big deal. Because, you know, before, when we would try to adopt certain curriculum, you know, we didn't really have the time or what it took to research everything. Where Nicole's done a great job. And now we've, we're having great meetings with parents, with school board members, and, you know, with our teachers. And at the middle school, what it's nice to see is we're all speaking that same language for the transition. So I think that's just going to take some time because ELA was last year, math is, you know, coming up. So I think, you know, in a couple of years, I'm very optimistic that'll, that'll increase too. And kind of with your question too, Terry, is hopefully the attendance will, you know, increase as well. So those are some things that I'm looking forward to. And especially our math interventionist too at the middle school. Now they get to actually go into the classroom with our other Math Plus classes. So it's almost like you have a team teaching thing going on. And we also, at the middle school, have TransMath, which is another, another way to test the students and kind of see where those gaps are. Because since the standard ice test is so broad, NWA, we can kind of see where the gaps are. But yeah, I, I agree with you because I know when I was on data digs before in the high school, we could figure out where, where we needed to go. And, and that's a little bit harder right now. So we have some other things in place too, to kind of see where the students maybe have some gaps and where we need to go to for our curriculum and to help make it a little more rigorous. Yep, any other questions? Thank you.
All right, then just to finish up with the high school. You can see the, the two, the scores are for the performance with the ELA and the math. Then our on-time graduation and our high school graduation. And you'll look at the bottom, in that bottom right-hand corner, you can see comparison from year to year. So we had a, we had a nice little uptick with our growth with, you know, over four percent with math. So, you know, that was something that we really strived on and really worked on last year. We're going to continue to look at as we're going through our math curriculum as well. I have a couple more slides here if I can. So then the next part of this is our college and career readiness. And there's a lot of information here, but these are a lot of things that are taken in and what's looked at for our coursework readiness. These are all three segments within the college and career readiness. It's our coursework readiness, our assessment readiness, and then they kind of combine that and call it college and career ready. So our coursework readiness, as you can see, our comparison, we, we do very well with that, saying that students are leaving Yankton High School with an advanced certificate. And those are things that are laid out within the South Dakota Department of Ed with the course guides that they have. So our assessment readiness, you can see there too, we are, we're, we're doing really, really well with that. We're above the state averages for twenty-one, twenty-two. And then our college and career readiness, that's kind of a combination of what that looks like. There was a lot of efforts in the last four or five years. And areas where we were not as high as where we should have been because of some of the things of how the state was calculating these. The state did take some feedback with those and they've changed some of those areas. And it's really, really helped our scores with where we're at with that as well. So that, that's kind of going through within the college and career readiness calculations. And then also our ACTs with where we're at compared to the state also. And then this is just kind of comparisons with our other ESD schools with where we're at. You know, we're in the top one or two or three within all of the schools within the state within these areas for the college and career readiness area as well as our state testing. So I just want to point out, the college and career readiness is working and looking back at the graduating class of twenty-twenty-one, okay? So it's looking back a couple, couple of years. And you can see with our coursework readiness, the assessment readiness, and then the college and career readiness, we're doing, you know, we're doing well with those things. And then our state testing scores with our juniors in the spring of twenty-two. So that was last spring, our juniors tested. And that's where our scores were at with our ELA and both of our math. So, you know, we're, we have some goals within each of our departments. Our ELA, we just went through a curriculum review that worked really hard. And they've had really good scores with that and they want to continue with that, regular with that. And then as we've just started our math curriculum, you know, it's been, it's been the challenge that's been put up and to set up some goals of what, what is it that we need to look at to continue with our juniors when they're testing at that, at the spring of their junior year. So we have a lot of things that we're going to be bringing forward and just looking and having some discussions within those curricular meetings that we have coming up. So that kind of wraps up our areas. I'll open it up for some questions. If there's any.
One of the problems I have with using ACTs score comparisons is that you're not testing growth of any what kind. You're going from one group of students to the next group of students. And you know, some years you might have particularly grown a strong group of students, some years maybe not so strong. So it's kind of a funny measure to use for growth, but which they do, so.
And I would agree with you, and I think the state recognized that. And they looked at some of the things of, of some other assessments that we use with the NCRC. And that's something that in Yankton, we've done that for quite some time. And a lot of students have took advantage of that. Actually, our seniors just took that recently. We had our senior day, which was fantastic. And they had, they worked with some parchments and transcript. They worked with Department of Labor on some things. And then for another half of the day, they took the NCRC assessment. We got those results back already with the students that were tested. They were phenomenal. They just, we did very, very well, very proud of that. And we shared that with both our staff and our students too. So, and those, like I said, with those things, it keeps pulling the data from a couple of years behind. So our data is still going to look pretty good with some of those coming in the future. So I expect to see that probably even increase with where we're at with some of those. So that's a good thing.
Another thing I want to share too is that I'm finding, I find that the four-year graduation rate is also probably an unfair rate to really show true graduation rate. Now, I see you had the five-year rate, which is significantly better. And really, people, things happen in a student's life where they can't go it through four years. And also you have interventions made by parents and counselors and administrators and teachers that help pull a student back and get those extra credits they need for graduation. That's why it's more important to us as a student graduates or a student graduates in four years.
Right, and those are some of the, those are some of the neat stories that I've seen within my year and a half of, of some of our students that are, are fifth-year seniors that come in and work their tail off because they had an incident that came up within their, within their education part there from their freshman year. And they come in and they've worked hard and they've done that. So that's been, that is the thing that we want to continue to strive for is that high school completion.
I have a question about ACT rates. Do we have any data about percentages of like the senior class that takes the ACT that may be different in Yankton versus some of those other schools?
I, I would say that it, it really depends across the state with that. There are schools that are counseling students that if they're not going to a four-year school or going out of state or even going in-state, that they don't necessarily need to take the ACT. I will tell you that we have a lot of our students that take the ACT, which is a, which is a good thing. There are some of them that go, whether they go to a, a technical school, whether they go to a college, whether they go to out-of-state college, they're taking those. I will tell you this as well, we have a student that was, that went to an Ivy League school, didn't take the ACT and didn't need to. So it's just very, the ACT is, was always a metric that was used. And it's still being used, but, and it was used really for college entrance is what that was being used for. They've really changed that now to where it's, it's nice and you can, you have opportunities for opportunity scholarships and those things and how they give some of those. But it's not yes or no to come to, to go to a four-year school for college. Good question.
And then to your point, Sarah, I did look at that. I had the same question. So I went back and I looked at some of our ESD schools. And our N number for the number of kids taking the ACT, I think this last time was around sixty-eight percent. It was not that high in some of those other schools. And frankly, I think what Mr. D is right, that there are schools that they don't encourage the taking of the ACT probably as much as we do. I think we just really leave it open for our kids. And then the other thing, and I don't know how to measure this to compare other schools, but I also looked at, we had a number of kids that only took the ACT one time. And usually, most kids take it twice, but COVID got in the way of some of the testing.
Correct.
And so kids were not able to take it twice, which really can impact your score. So, but Todd and I talked, and the ACT is something that we would like to see increase in our scores. But overall, it's becoming frankly, not as important to a lot of schools. And you mentioned the other options that we have for testing and how well our kids did recently. It was really phenomenal.
Very, very good.
If a student takes the ACT more than once, are the best scores counted then?
The best ones, yes.
Anybody else have any questions?
All right, thank you.
You all. Next up, we have our CTE Curriculum Guide, Mrs. Vannes.
All right, so we also are undergoing a CTE review for curriculum, along with math that you heard about tonight. And so on the board agenda is the curriculum guide that is recommended by the CTE Curriculum Committee to be adopted. So this version, I try to usually highlight the notable changes from the previous version. This version is vastly different. The previous version was from two thousand and six. So if you just think about how long you've been, how long our CTE department has been around and how technology evolves, then you know that it's okay. You know that this has evolved greatly as well. So the CTE Curriculum Committee, which includes teachers and admin from middle and high school, because we do have some of those CTE classes offered at the middle school as well, started their work last October in twenty-twenty-one. started their work last October in two thousand and twenty-one. The first focus of the committee was to develop a curriculum guide that outlines our current course offerings in CTE. Because of that last one being in two thousand and six, we really need to update it to what do we currently offer. Then the second focus of the committee was to envision our path in CTE for the next seven years. So the state has sixteen career clusters, and we investigated those to which ones match the needs of our community best. To do this, we surveyed our students and parents, as well as participated ourselves in a variety of professional development, development opportunities. The outcome of that second focus led the committee to adding the opportunity for potential course offerings in the CTE clusters of education and training, health science, hospitality and tourism, and then some additional courses in agriculture, food and natural resources. So currently, and those are listed in the curriculum guide as well, as potential opportunities and written in the memo in more detail. So currently, the committee has now expanded to include additional YSD staff, counselors, sped staff, as well as parents, and a variety of parents from community partnerships as well, and school board members. And the committee now is focusing on continuing to explore those opportunities that are presented in the curriculum guide. So tonight, I would take any questions and then recommend that we adopt the CTE Curriculum Guide as it's presented.
Will this guide recommend any changes in, in the current curriculum? Or not obviously curriculum, but I mean, course offerings in terms of like course catalogs for Yankton High School and Middle School?
Yes, so the, the course, the curriculum guide includes what is current, the curriculum guide is kind of the starting measure of our course catalog. So everything that's laid out at the middle school in CTE and high school currently in the course catalog are outlined in the CTE Curriculum Guide as presented. We did add some additional potential classes in those cluster areas due to our surveyed results and our community interest. So the additional course offerings are within the education and training cluster, health science, hospitality and tourism, and the egg cluster. Just because they're a part of the curriculum guide doesn't mean that we have, that we're putting them on the course catalog even next year, but it's a path that we envision that we would like to explore going forward.
So by approving the curriculum guide does not necessarily approve these courses, correct?
Correct.
I think what we really focused on from our group that we met within our parents is that we want to have a vision, what does this look like for the next seven years? And even though that we have, then we may not be offering them next year, but it might come here four or five.
Any other questions? I would encourage you to, and I wanted to show it to you, I would encourage you to look at the belief statement that the committee put together for the curriculum guide. It's on the very beginning of the curriculum guide. I actually have it. I think this does a nice job of encompassing our vision. So the Yankton School District, in collaboration with business and community partnerships, provides educational opportunities dedicated to empower students to compete in a global marketplace while providing lifelong learning and academic, with academic and technical standards. CTE teachers will engage students in high-quality, rigorous and relevant educational pathways, promoting creativity, innovation, leadership and service. CTE teachers are committed to providing feedback that reflects progress toward mastery of skills and content standards. And through participation in CTE, students will be immersed in experiences that support development of core competencies that prepare students for career readiness. I think the, the committee did an awesome job creating a vision for us. We used a lot of survey feedback, like I said, a lot of professional development opportunities at the state level to help us continue to see how we can support the growth of our CTE department. Any other questions?
This is an action item, or an entertaining motion to approve the curriculum?
I make a motion that we approve the CTE Curriculum Guide as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Removed by Mrs. Sarda, second by Dr. Sternquist, so we approve the CTE Curriculum Guide. Go call please.
Sarda?
Yes.
Sternquist?
Yes.
Greenaway?
Yes.
Crandall?
Yes. Item twelve, tax levy request.
Hey, yep, you'll recall in September when we adopted our budget and certified our levies, that I mentioned we have everything in place except the growth factor for capital LA, which has become the norm now since the two thousand and sixteen funding formula overhaul. So we now have those final growth values, which are attached to the agenda. And the recommendation tonight is to amend the tax levy request for the Capital Altway Fund, asking for, as stated in the resolution, five million, one oh five, oh thirty-seven. So everything else is the same, the levy rates are the same, just the values are updated to reflect those growth figures. So it'd be my recommendation to go ahead and do so, and I'll file an amended request on your behalf.
Any questions? entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to amend the tax levy request as listed out.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Greenaway, second by Dr. Sternquist, so we approve the tax levy request. Discussion, go call.
Greenaway?
Yes.
Sternquist?
Yes.
Sarda?
Yes.
Crandall?
Yes. entertain a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of South Dakota Codified Law one dash twenty-three, twenty-five dash two, section three.
I'll make a motion to move to executive session under South Dakota Codified Law one dash twenty-five dash two, item three.
Second.
By Dr. Sternquist, second by Mrs. Greenaway, we go into executive session. All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Mr. D, can I see you for a second?
No, give him just a second, he's gonna switch a couple buttons.
Okay, we're out of executive session, no action was taken for that, and I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, second.
Would you second it, and any question, any?
No discussion.
No discussion, that's good. Voice vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.